I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
This is the January 11 meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee. For those of you that may be joining us online, this meeting is being held both in person and remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, Section 20, this remote meeting is offered via Google Meet technology. For those of you that may be watching as we go through the agenda, I will just point out that public comment has been moved lower in the agenda. It served us well in the several previous meetings because some of the information that will be shared may likely serve to answer some of the questions that people may have. But I do want everyone to be aware that we do have public comment. It's just a little later in the agenda. So that being said, can we have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the bills? There being none, all those in favor unanimous. Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from both meetings of December 14th and the meeting last week of January 4th?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion on both or either of those minutes? There being none, all those in favor also unanimous. Thank you. So as I said, we are going to move our public comment section below Dr. Meyer's report on our learning model update, hoping that that helps to inform our community and therefore any questions, comments. Dr. Meyer?
Thank you. So the learning model update, just kind of a follow-up to pretty much what we had discussed on Monday, the 4th. So in the first page here, I did go over, I put our last three weeks of data on this little table, just so we can see our average daily incident rate per 100,000 has climbed from 77.1 to 77.6 to 91.3, and our percent positivity has increased from 11.8 to 12.81 to 14.55. I only went back three weeks, but these are the three weeks in a row that we've now been over a 10% positivity rate, which was one of the concerns that the Board of Health had of this now being three weeks in a row. On January 4th, the Board of Health met and they approved recommendations to allow the current Remote Plus model to continue, which is consistent with the state guidance. However, they requested that we not bring in additional students or move to the hybrid plus until the percent positivity drops below 10%. Further recommending the phase-in individual grades depending on how far we are below 10%. We kind of discussed what this would look like. I'll discuss it a little more later. And to allow winter sports to proceed with the following clarifications, that all members of the team, including players and coaches, will be considered close contacts. It must be quarantined if there's a positive case on the team. So those were the recommendations. Mr. Bates and I were in attendance at that meeting, and the Board of Health voted to approve those recommendations. Our proposed plan, the plan I'm proposing right now, is to shift to a hybrid plus learning model as soon as the percent positivity falls below the 10%. The hybrid plus learning model would use the same as the green and gold cohorts from the fall. However, the in-person learning day would be shortened to the current Remote Plus schedule to eliminate in-school meals. I think that's one of the big changes we've had, which has been, seems to be working for us. Additionally, students learning remotely will have synchronous access to their classes throughout the day, and all students in person and remote will follow the same daily schedule of classes. So what should allow us to do is provide more structure to those students who would be learning remotely. So if the green cohort was in person, the gold cohort wouldn't be totally asynchronous. They would still have a schedule to follow. They would still have to go to attend their classes, beginning of the classes at least, till they got the lesson, the agenda for the day, those types of things. And then there might be a point where they do break off for some asynchronous work, but at least the beginning of the lesson, they're going to be there for the instruction. The phase-in priority, each building's identified the prioritization for bringing back grades to the school in a hybrid plus model. The rate that we're able to invite grades back to school shall be determined by the percent positivity rate. So for example, what we talked about was if we drop to something like 9.9, we're not just going to say, okay, we're below 10 now, we can bring everybody back. We might try to phase in like one grade in each building, or a couple grades in elementary school, one grade in each of the other buildings. However, let's say that, you know, for some reason, or even if we start before February vacation, maybe over February vacation it drops a lot, then maybe coming back from February vacation, we might say, oh, we are going to go to a full hybrid model, or something like that, depending on how precipitously that drops. So multiple grades might be phased in at the same time. Once a grade is brought back, it's our intention to allow the grade to continue, even if percent positivity go back over 10. That's why we don't want to go too crazy with it. So we don't want to have like invite kindergarten back, and then next week tell kindergarten they got to go home again. So my idea is, you know, we're assuming that now we should be on the downside of the holiday curve, and that we're hoping that the percent positivity continues, once it starts declining, it will continue declining. However, if it were to like peak up one week, we don't want to have to send everybody home who's been invited back. The next page has a table, kind of goes through the priority. I put kindergarten at the top row because I think if you told me right now that, you know, we're at 9.99%, and we can bring one grade back, I would bring kindergarten in. I think it's the most challenging for kindergarteners to learn remotely. Also, we have additional staffing in those classrooms. They do have an instructional assistant, so it does allow for some additional flexibility. After that, Clinton Elementary School prioritized basically going up, you know, starting from kindergarten, working through grade four. The middle school would also prioritize starting at grade five, working up through grade eight. Once again, in that, when you look at that grade span, you're looking at the fact that, you know, to leave an eighth grader potentially home alone, learning is, you know, probably going to be more successful than doing something similar with a fifth grader. At the high school, we have it reversed. We prioritize bringing in grade 12, and then working our way back down, and that's more focused on the nature of obviously graduation. We have our least amount of time with seniors. We want to make sure we get them in. And then the other grades, we're going to have to worry about trying to make sure that they're being prepared for whatever the MCAS or accountability requirements that they're going to have to take, even if it's not this year, next year, but they're going to have the shortest amount of time to meet those graduation requirements, so we want to bring them in as soon as we can. The ninth grade, obviously, we have the most time left to try to help those students out. What we're proposing for some timing and logistics on this, weekly data reports are released by the state each Thursday evening. Usually they come out around 5:00, sometimes later. It's, you never really know. So our goal would be that on Friday morning, we would, you know, as an administrative team, we would make sure that we were clear on how many grades we were comfortable bringing back based on the percent positivity, communicate to parents which grades, if any, are being invited back to the hybrid plus model. We would ask parents to notify the school no later than Monday. By the end of the day, Monday, if they intend to send their student to school or to keep them home, because we'd like to do, we want to know who we're expecting. So even though we're inviting kindergartners back, kindergartners back, or first graders back, there might be families that still want to keep their students home under the remote model, which is fine. Tuesday, we would use Tuesday as a chance to just work out the logistics, making sure that the teachers, the bus company, everyone kind of knew who to expect in the building, and then we would start bringing that first group, that group back on Wednesday. So that's sort of our turnaround time to kind of say from a Thursday data report to students in the building. We'd like to try to get it going from a Thursday to Wednesday, they would come back in. Some other, one other note, student learning time regulations. The DESE has implemented new student learning time regulations regarding remote and hybrid learning. These regulations go into effect on January 19th. Remote learning needs to include 40 hours of synchronous instruction for every 10 days. Hybrid must include 35 hours of synchronous instruction per 10 days. So mostly the middle school and the high school will be making minor adjustments to their schedules. Essentially, what's been happening in a current model is that the afternoon has been more of office hours, or sort of like extra help. It was clarified in the student learning time document from the DESE that those do not count as synchronous learning time, so we are changing those to, those will be changed to required classes, and there'll be mandatory remote classes. Also, as we switch to a hybrid model, it'll allow an afternoon session where the entire class would still be remote, and a teacher would have a chance to kind of check in with the entire class as a whole in one learning format. Vaccinations, just quick update on vaccinations. Vaccinations are beginning to roll out. The Board of Health has scheduled a vaccine clinic for first responders later this week in the high school. Currently, K-12 educators are part of Phase 2. There's not a real hard timeline on when Phase 2 starts. It's usually more of kind of a general sometime between February and April guideline that they're giving us. Preliminary survey results of the staff indicate that 87.3% of them will intend to receive the vaccination when it's offered to them. We did do a survey for that. Then we also, the survey also included questions on, you know, if we had limited doses, do you have some sort of condition that you feel should basically prioritize you? And also, if we were to get unexpected doses, would you be, do you have a condition that might prioritize you, and would you be willing to take it on short notice? Just because they are doing some of the vaccination out of our high school, and we know that there is a spoilage factor, so if for some reason that were to happen, we want to be prepared. The, one last item that I want to talk about, which I think it's a new development that we just, I didn't put it in that write-up, but I did put the memo in here. So if you go a couple pages in your document, past the updated graph in the state report, there's a memorandum regarding the pooled testing in K-12 schools. So on Friday, the governor and the commissioner announced this testing program for K-12 schools, and the idea is to begin testing students and staff using pooled testing. So pooled testing is basically, you know, you have a group of people, you take all of their, you know, take all their test samples, and you test them at once, and if it's negative, then it's safe to assume that everyone in that sample was negative. If it comes back positive, then you have to drill down and try to figure out who's positive in the sample. We don't know much about this program yet. There's a webinar tomorrow, 10:00, that we'll be attending to learn more information about it. There was a preliminary survey that went out, that you had to indicate your interest in the program. We did complete the survey already, saying that we would be interested, but a lot of the questions on there that, you know, say, gave the answer of, I need more information, I need more information, so, you know, a lot of, that was, that was our answer to a lot of them, because we don't have all the information yet, but we did want to complete expressing interest. And I do think that, you know, what this would do is this would allow us to kind of get a better sense of, you know, what the true positivity rate in the school is, get a better understanding of, you know, sort of this, the fear of sort of the asymptomatic people, you know, really kind of try to narrow down how many of those are there, if there are. The state is providing this free for six weeks, so anyone who wants to participate in the program for six weeks is able to do so at no cost. And the additional, if you wanted to continue beyond that, you would have to pay for some of the supplies. We'll have to, we'll get more information on that. But we are also expecting that we will be getting an additional grant coming to all schools through the recent, most recent COVID package that was passed over the holidays, and they're saying that that grant would be eligible, the money in that grant would be eligible to pay for this type of program if it was something you wanted to continue going with. I think that the testing is a key, it's a key step here, and I believe the testing along with the vaccinations are two steps towards hopefully getting all our students back in school. I also think it's something that could maybe help speed up. You know, I think if for some reason it takes longer than we hope to get below the 10% guideline set forth by the Board of Health, that if we're able to, you know, when we see the timeline of when we can introduce this testing, the data we get from that testing may influence, be able to influence that decision, and we might be able to make some changes to that if necessary at that time. So I think that that's as good as, as far as it's an additional resource that the state would be sending our way. In terms of this, you know, this past week, since we've been back, we did have four staff members who have been identified as positive this past week. One was in the building on Monday. I believe two were in the building on Monday and Tuesday, and one was in the building Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. All of them were identified, well, at least the most recent three, were directly identified as close contacts from gatherings that had happened previously to returning back to school, which is why they were, they weren't in school. You know, that's why once they notified of that, they stopped coming to school and began quarantining, and we got their positive results on, over the weekend. As a result of that, we went through identified close contacts. I believe between positive cases, even including those, some who were positive over break, we had 17 staff members out at the elementary school today. But we did walk through, and Ms. Sylvia and I walked through every classroom today just to kind of check on all the staffing and make sure that we were adequately covered. We do have four classrooms in the middle school that we have switched to full remote. Basically, every classroom whose primary teacher was identified as positive, or a full-time staff member in the room was identified as positive, we switched the entire classroom to full remote for the quarantine period. So that's, that's pretty much, what I have is sort of an update, and sort of what I, what we're proposing as a plan, trying to incorporate the Board of Health recommendation moving forward. So I don't know at this point if you have any, if the board has any additional questions or wants any additional clarification.
Yeah, and so if, I don't know if we have any public comment in person here tonight, or if we have any online, but I'd like to give the committee an opportunity to weigh in if they so choose first.
Okay, just, there is no public comment online right now. I would just say that...
Well, and I just want to give the committee a chance.
Right, I just want to make sure that people know if they do have a public comment, that they want to start typing it now, because we'll want to be able to get it.
Yes.
Just a question. The Board of Health, it's a recommendation, correct? So if we still wanted to continue with our plan to go back to school on the 19th, the Board could do that, correct?
The committee could do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I guess, I mean, I think we would have to, I mean, I suppose, I think, I'd have to double-check exactly how they voted it. I mean, I do think it was voted as a recommendation, but I do think that, you know, essentially, much like when the Board of Health votes to like close the ball fields or something like that, I mean, I do think pretty much this would be, would be their jurisdiction that if we decided to disregard their recommendation, I think that basically it would just require them taking another meeting and adapting their vote, and then we wouldn't really, then they could force us into that.
Yeah, I mean, right. I think the choice would be ours, but I think we probably do so at our peril and at the expense of the partnership that we forged with the Board of Health.
Yes and no. I mean, like I said, it's their recommendation based on what they, they had at that time period, but now, like I said, I do believe that now that we've gone over the holidays, over the curve, I think we are going to keep going down, and I think by the 19th, we will be in the place where we can have the kindergartners back and start bringing all the kids back in a hybrid model. And I think, I think we had a good plan, and we've had a good plan going along. Do I think we jumped a little too soon into remote? Maybe. I'll go with that, but our plan to go back hybrid on the 19th, I still think is a good plan.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I would.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we, I mean, we do have deep respect for our Board of Health and what they were dealing with at that time that they had their meeting, but I would like to make a motion that we continue with our prior plan to return to school in a hybrid model on January 19th.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second for the, because I have a couple of questions.
For the sake of debate?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So just a point of clarification before we get into the motion. Did you want to, I do have two public comment things here. Did you want to take public comment before we get down to the learning model plan again on the agenda for voting?
So if I can come back to you, will you withdraw your motion for the time?
I'll withdraw it here, public comment. Correct.
Okay, so I had a couple of thing here. So I'll read some of these. Emma Abram says, I have serious concerns about, oh, sorry, it's from Shannon Abram. I have serious concerns about sports being prioritized, as mentioned in the last meeting. Has it been thoroughly taken into consideration that exposing the students and coaches, the students and coaches from other towns, will increase the exposure rate and drive up the positivity rate in our town, especially given that the numbers have risen in the last three weeks? It seems like it would make more sense to prioritize education and not exposing students to others in surrounding towns. So that was that comment. I have a comment from Megan Gilbert Davis, CES and CMS parent. When would we as parents get more information about the pool testing and whether or not the town will be participating? I guess Megan, I would say that probably the next school committee meeting would be when we would really roll it out unless it was a more pressing timeline. And one thing I did forget to say that I probably should clarify now that I have that question, is that you would need to give consent. So we would have to send a consent form to parents for your student to participate in the testing prior to just sort of happening, so we would, we would keep parents involved. Evan Philbin, Clintonian, Clinton Public Schools should transition to full remote learning as soon as possible. This is from the Emma Abram account. I have two daughters of special education, only one attending in person, the other has a reevaluation, which I have had to reschedule one meeting for this week already because of exposure of the therapist. Please take these students into consideration. It's a horrible feeling as a mom to have to watch my oldest daughter have meltdowns Elizabeth Cisneros, parent of CES and CMS, kids need to be back playing sports. How and when is this going to happen? These kids need an outlet. Most kids, and most kids, it's the sports they're into. My family and kids need sports back. And then Shannon reminded me that she's not Emma, she's Shannon Abram, PTA Vice President of CPAC Board. Kate Moran, 17 staff members out is not numbers going down for our school population. Melissa LaJoy, thank you, school community member who spoke about following the plan for bringing students back on January 19th. Do we know why 10% was a chosen number for the positivity rate? There are other school districts who are hybrid with over 10% positivity rates. Why can't we have that choice as well? And that's from Melissa L., CES parent. And Julie Donahue says the numbers are increasing daily, not decreasing. And Amanda Ramsen says, these children are suffering, stuck inside their home all day. They are missing the essential social interaction with their peers. It's critical to their development. There are ways to do it safely. Amanda R., CES parent. So those are pretty much the comments. Oh, I think I have one more that just came in. I appreciate the work of the school department in dealing with this pandemic, and difficult decisions have been placed before you. As a father of both a kindergartner and two high school age students, I confirm that remote, while challenging for a high school student, is nearly impossible for a kindergartner with working parents. At best, it's been a social connection forum, there's been little education. This is in no way a reflection on his teachers, who are outstanding. And that's from Noah Bombard. And Patrick Philbin says, what are the Board of Health recommendations for this week? So I did speak to the Board of Health today at length, and most of, and they were still recommending the same recommendations from last week. I had one more, Sabrina Teroux. I just want to thank all the teachers and staff. Our children have been fully remote from the beginning and are thriving, and I know that has to do with the amazing teachers. I just want to thank you. All right.
Well, so thank you to every, one second. Thank you to everyone who took the time to offer a comment here through the stream, and those that sent letters, rest assured, you know, when they come to us, either through Mary or to us directly, they are shared with the entire committee, so thank you for taking the time and being part of the process.
I would just like to add to the public comments. I don't know about the other board members, but I know I've had a lot of communication with parents, teachers, and getting emails as well, and every parent, every teacher that I've spoke to want to go back to school. I've only had three emails that were negative to not go back. Everyone else I've spoke to wants to be back. And they voted me into this office, into this seat, and I'm going to listen to what they're saying to me.
Absolutely, and you're representing your constituency well. Do you want to put your motion back on the floor?
I would like to put the motion back on the table that we return to school on the 19th, as previously planned.
Okay, is there a second?
Again, I'll second for that.
Okay. Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion thereon?
Mr. Chairman, and I just want to address a couple of things, and if I get long-winded, please cut me off. To the, to the public comment about the sports, I agree with them. I, I think if we're, if we're not, if it's not safe medically to go back to school, then we shouldn't be bringing hundreds of kids from out of town into the school buildings to play sports. I'm all for it. If we can, if, and I'm not a medical professional, I don't pretend to be, I'm going to, I'm listening to the Board of Health, and I know Dr. Meyer and Joel have met with the Board of Health a number of times. I think our Board of Health does a great job, and this is, there's no cookie-cutting answer. There's, you know, no matter what decision any of these boards make, whether it's select from us or whatever, you know, some people be happy, some won't, but I do agree with them. I think anything that we can do for these kids outside of school, whether it's banned, drama, whatever, is great because they're cooped up. But I don't believe bringing, you know, to say that we can't bring our own kids in here for an education because of the dangers medically, that we should be bringing literally hundreds of kids from out of town, and that we have no, no idea, you know, what they're tracking. I mean, you think they're doing, they're tracking them, but we don't know that. If we can safely bring our kids back, and I, and I'm going to, and again, I know Deb made the motion, and I'd like to, you know, to know how that would look, and I, you know, that's one of my next questions, but if we can bring our kids back, then let's play sports like they attended. On that same note, the Board of Health, and I don't have any updates, and maybe Steve does, the Board of Health's policy in the fall was if a town was red, they didn't, you know, in other words, if Clinton was red, we didn't go somewhere else, and if that town that was red, we wouldn't go there. Well, if we're red, I don't know how we could play anyway. And again, if we can work out, I know they approved practices, and if we can keep doing that, fine, safely, but I don't want to, again, I say this for the fourth time, I don't want to turn our kids away from an education, at the same time say, hey, you know, come in from another town and play, play a sport here in town. So I would ask, unless...
So I just don't want to complicate things here. We have a motion on the table, and so let's, let's use our time speaking to that motion, and then if you want a different motion...
No, I wasn't making a motion, I just wanted to address that issue. But I would like to ask, if we did come back on the 19th, I guess, what would that, what would that look like?
So I think our options, and Dr. Meyer, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our options are to, to either implement the phased-in hybrid on Monday, the 19th, which is contrary, which is contrary to the Board's, Board of Health's recommendation, or to, you know, to stay with the recommendation and continue with the model that we currently have. And just for the sake of clarity, not every student is, is fully remote. That is not on the table right now. That is not part of this motion, and that isn't part of the phase-in plan. What we currently have is a model where the majority of our students are in a remote model, and a portion of our students, students with high needs and English language learners and others, are currently coming to school, and that is continuing. And so, so this motion, I believe, Mrs. Goodsell's motion, would be to add to that model by, by implementing the phase-in plan, which would be by the 19th, adding kindergarten in. That's correct, right?
Add kindergarten and then work our way up to everything else, but yes.
Okay, that's what I'm... So that's what she's... So, that's what she's, so, your motion is to start returning people on the 19th regardless of the percent positivity, essentially?
Right. And, you know, and it may not be going against the recommendation, because by the 19th, it could be at 10%. But like I said, I do believe we're on the downward trend. The holidays are over, all of that's over, everyone's back to business. Those who were out celebrating and things like that aren't doing that now. And like I said, why do our kids have to suffer? Because people were out doing things they probably shouldn't be doing.
So, would, at the risk of not having talked with the committee about this, would you be open to a meeting on Friday, we'd probably have to do it remote, but due to schedules and whatnot, to see what the data looks like?
I'd be open to it, but I do think we need to get the kids back in school. I just.
So the, the data really doesn't, it doesn't play into your thinking?
It would not, it would not change my decision at all. And like I said, and, and, you know, to our teachers, kudos to you. I mean, all of the teachers I've spoke to, all are, "Get me back in there. I need the students in there. I need to have them in front of me. I need to, they need to be there. Our students come first." So many teachers say that to me. "Our students come first." And they want them back in there. And like I said, other than three emails, every single person I've spoke to wants to be back on the 19th.
Joel, I just, I, maybe I'm the only one. Hopefully I'm the only.
One second, once, I just, I want to give Mrs. Zepan and Mr. Verakis a chance to.
No, I just want to ask a question. I, I'm not, I'm confused as to what, what the, the 19th would look like. So you're talking.
So the motion, I believe, the motion would be on the 19th to continue with the model that we have, where students that are currently coming to school and current, students that are currently remote would stay in that model with the addition of all kindergarten coming back.
Okay, so it's not a hybrid. It's not that.
It's hybrid plus.
But it's not the, the green gold like we had before, correct? It's not like a Port Starberg, like, you know, you don't.
No, it'd be subject to the, to the phased-in plan.
It would still be green gold. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It would still have to be green gold at this point.
But instead of having all the green and all the gold come back, they would start with kindergarten coming back. Then they would start two and three. Maybe two, three, and four.
Now I get it, okay. Sorry? Thank you.
And as, as kindergarten comes back and everything's going well, we have first and second come back. Everything's going well, we have third and fourth come back, and eventually, hopefully by February vacation, we're full back.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Hybrid.
So, so just to be clear, it sounds like what Deb is saying, if I'm not misunderstanding, is that she, she agrees with the recommendation of the Board of Health outside of the 10% and that we would phase in by sticking to our plan of the 19th.
That's what it sounds, yeah.
That's what it sounds like.
Right, I was just, I, I thought we were, and I'm not, I, Steve clarified, so I thought when you said we're going to go back, I thought you meant the hy, the old hybrid where.
Like everybody.
Yeah, 50% of the kids would come, and then the next week, the other half. That's what I was, that's what I thought the motion was.
So, I'll just, I'll share this because I think it's, it's relevant. I did receive a text from Robin Quist, the CTA president, and she has stated that the CTA is not recommending that we bring any more students back until the positivity rate goes below 10%. We would like to go on record with that position. So.
So noted.
Just to share that.
Please.
So, I, I really applaud everybody, administrators, teachers, all the school staff. I mean, the efforts that have been put into place to keep our kids safe, to get the high-risk kids back into school, and as far as I know, we've had no proven transmissions in the school. Is that correct? So, I want nothing more than to get our kids back into school. But I'm, I'm leaning towards going with the Board of Health's recommendation. The numbers, the, the numbers are here, we've been climbing. It's only Monday, but you can't say for sure what Thursday's numbers are going to bring. And I think taking it the way the Board of Health is approaching it and making these decisions based on the data that's in front of us is what we need to continue to go with. So I would be more inclined to go with the Board of Health's recommendation and start the phase in after, you know, after the numbers start to go below the 10%. One comment I will make about sports and, you know, all the other various extracurricular activities is that we all have the best interests of the children in mind. We want them all to be involved, to be, you know, from a health standpoint, keeping them active is good, whatever club, whatever music or band or drama, whatever they want to belong to. We've seen the, the notes from the MIAA. They have put a lot of time and energy into this to get these kids to play sports. And if anything, the pods that we're invited to, that we're playing with, if anything, I would think some of those towns would be coming back to Clinton saying, "We don't want you coming here," because, you know, we know where Clinton is as far as the number goes. But I'm wondering if anybody has ever considered having the sports, the children who are playing sports, go to a remote-only learning model that allows them to stay on their sports team, but not cause, you know, not have people worry, have to have them coming into school after they've been around kids from the other pod towns.
Tina, I think it's an, it's a very interesting compromise, and I think that we have to, sports are just, what I don't want to see is, we, I don't want to see people using sports as an opportunity for a negotiation tool to, to drive more kids back into the school, because that's what we all want. It's not one or the other, and I've been on record as saying that before, because it's not. The guidelines are in place from the state, the MIA, the pods, the athletic directors, hundreds of hours have been put into this to make sure that the kids have whatever it is we can offer to them and allow parents to make proper choices. When we make choices on learning, we're sort of making them for you, like, and with you, right? But when we make choices on sports and we vote on the opportunity for the outlet, we're not doing so by saying you have to play sports. That's a parent's decision with their child. They've got to figure that out as families. So, I don't want to see, it shouldn't be one, if one doesn't happen, the other shouldn't. But I do like where you're going, Tina, because if your child wants to play sports, maybe there is an opportunity for a potential compromise to say during that season or during that time, should they consider being in the remote pod? And quite frankly, if we're going by the recommendation of the, the Board of Health until we get below 10%, those kids aren't in the school anyway. They're not even there.
So, I don't want to conflate the issue, because I, I think that there are two separate things at work here. We have a motion on the floor that we're discussing about returning to school with the phased-in, the hybrid-plus phased-in plan, contrary to the, the Board of Health's recommendation, which is fine, we can debate it at length. If we want to have a separate motion about continuing with athletics, then, then I think that should be a separate motion. I understand that it, it, you know, it sort of gets all jumbled together, but, but I do see them as separately. So, anything further on the motion to, sorry, Mary, could you repeat it? The, the motion to, on January 19th, to disregard the recommendation of the Board of Health and to, and to move toward a hybrid-plus phased-in? Please.
So, Mrs. Goodsell motion to return school on the 19th, as previously planned, with phased-in, with phased-in plan regarding the support of our recommendation of waiting to below 10%. Mr. Bailey, please.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion on that motion?
Joel, just, and I know you brought it up with the Friday. I don't know what the numbers will be, I don't know if he here does. I would ask that Deb, if you could consider withdrawing the motion and maybe we do a, a remote meeting on Thursday with, looking at the newer numbers and if they've, you know, and again, I know 10% is the, the benchmark that the Board of Health meant, but, you know, like Steve alluded to, if it goes to nine point something. So if there's some significant drop and, you know, Steve or yourself meet with the Board of Health and they're happy with the direction it's going, and it, it facilitates getting back Tuesday, the only reason I say Thursday is, is, you know, Monday's the holiday. So if we meet Friday night, we say, "We're coming back Tuesday," it doesn't give anybody, you know, your staff any time or, or any family's time to, so if, if we could just, I guess, table it or withdraw it till Thursday.
I think I'd rather do the opposite.
Okay.
Do the motion now, and then if the numbers are going still up and not coming down, then have a meeting.
Okay, I just.
So, so we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, we've had discussion on it. I, I think, you know, let's take a vote and see where we are, and then if we need to, you know, make a different motion, we can do that. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed?
Actually, I'm not, I'm going to abstain.
Abstentions?
Yep.
Okay. Three to one, the motion's defeated.
Now, I don't know if this is a motion, and please, again, correct me if I'm, I'd like to make a motion that we plan a emergency meeting or a, a remote meeting for Thursday, you know, whatever, whatever time pending the, the numbers from the Board of Health to address that same motion, whether we go back into this, into the initial plan come the following Tuesday.
Okay. So, so the.
And please put that in some type of format.
Yeah, no, that's, no, 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 no.
So Mary can.
Everybody's doing fine. So the, the, you, you are moving to that the school committee has an emergency meeting. See, the problem with Thursday, I'll just say.
The numbers might not be out.
Yeah, it, it did, they didn't come out until late Thursday this past week, so.
Then Friday's fine. I mean, I'm just looking at the, the lead time, but I guess they can plan for both.
Could we do Friday at noon?
I can't do Friday at noon. I'm.
Yeah, Friday's good. I, I was just trying to look at the, but I guess if you.
No, I understand.
Yeah, Friday's fine.
I guess I want to just.
Please.
Discuss. Okay, so, we wait till Friday, and the numbers come out. I didn't see the update today of how many new cases were today.
We're down two from Friday.
Okay. But I can't imagine that that 14.55% number is going to be anywhere near the realm of 10%.
I think there's going to be a lot coming off, because a lot came on all at the same time, and they're all going to drop off at the same time.
But the, the increases over the last three weeks have been pretty steady, where it went from.
Because we had Christmas and we had celebrations, all parties in between, you know, we've had stuff going on in town, and then we ended up having New Year's. So we expected it, we knew, I mean, common sense tells us we were going to go up. But like I said, now, I do believe.
So, so, okay, so is there, is there appetite then for a motion now to move toward this model if the data supports it? And the reason I ask is because the, it's not that the data doesn't matter to you, but it, it was kind of irrelevant in terms of where you wanted to go with the first motion. So if, if Friday doesn't make a difference, I don't know what the point would be in, in having, having to consider what the new data might look like.
But if we met on Friday, it may sway other board members to say, you know what, the numbers are going down drastically. Maybe going back is a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kind of my point. I don't know if it'll get to 10%, because I'm not, you know, whatever, I'm not a math whiz here, but, and none of us, we can speculate all night long here, and there's a game on at eight o'clock. But, um, this, but I, I think, you know, what's the harm of scheduling the meeting? And if, if Thursday, if they do come out earlier, and they, they haven't, we can just cancel it, correct? I mean.
No, because you have to give, you have to post the meeting.
We, we do have to post it in advance.
Okay, well, then we have it, and we say, hey, it didn't work, and we waste 10 minutes.
So let me just, before we, before we go any further off the rails here, Dr. Meyer, Mary, do we have the capacity to have a potential meeting on Friday?
We do. I can post it tomorrow.
Okay.
And it's remote, right?
I don't know how we could do it otherwise on a.
Okay, no, I'm fine with that. I'm getting, getting the hang of that now.
So, so, just, let's, let's be clear on this. So, so the necessity of the meeting would be if the, if the percent positivity rate has dropped precipitously to the point where we can entertain this.
Yeah, I think so.
Right?
Yeah.
So, so I, so the motion then, I think, would be to, I think, would be, well, so I, I think here's the compromise, that, that we would move to continue with the Board of the Health, Board of Health's recommendations that we agreed to on Monday with the stipulation that if the numbers, we hope Thursday afternoon, drop to somewhere in the neighborhood of 10%, then, then we will meet and reconsider it. But, but to not have a motion on the floor now, if we don't have a meeting Friday, we've already, we've already decided we're going to continue with the Board of Health's recommendations. Is everybody clear on that?
Mm-hmm.
I think so.
Okay. All right, would someone like to make that motion?
So, just for clarification, how do we, what's the vehicle that we plan on? So for example, the Board of Health made a recommendation that they said 10%.
Right.
So, we're saying that regardless of their recommendation, if, if you felt that it was at 12%, and you wanted to say we're going to bring kids back on Tuesday, you wanted to make that decision Friday, independent of the Board of Health.
No, I'm, I'm saying that if it drops to 10%.
Well, if it drops to 10%, we're within the Board of Health's recommendation anyway.
Well, then, I guess that's the motion then. Then, so, so the, the motion then would be.
Significant.
I think at this point, like, the easiest thing to do here would be, let's recommend to accept the Board of Health's recommendation until the next school committee meeting, which is two weeks from now. That'll give us two data points. We can see if there's trending, not one data point that says it went from 14.5 to, to 12. Maybe we can see it went from 14.5 to 12, to, to 10, to make to Deb's point, where maybe the data is moving, right? And then, we're here every two weeks. So, you know, we, we've been following the data all along, and we've never not stopped for an emergency meeting if the data told us to do something different. So, in, in sake of making a simple motion, that would be my motion, is to say, let's go with the Board of Health's recommendation.
I appreciate your clarity.
Until two weeks from now, and then let's see what the data trending tells us to what happens next.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Motion having been made and seconded, thank you, Mr. Verakis, for your clarity, and I apologize for my lack of clarity. Is, do we have any further discussion on this motion?
Yes, I just want to thank you, Mr. Chairman. You don't ever need to apologize. These are just such uncharted waters that we are all going through right now. Sure, everyone that's sitting up here, all, we all have the same best interest of our children and all of our staff members in mind as we make these decisions. They are very hard decisions to make, but I do feel that our relationship with the Board of Health and how hard they have worked with us together to come up with what they feel is a plan, that's why I'm, that's why I'm supporting this at this time.
And I would also add, Tina, that just to, to Mr. Bailey and Ms. Goodsell's point, clarity around data is extremely important in times that are trying like this. So as we continue to partner with the Board of Health and want to get everybody back to school, because it's what we all want. There's no one that's sitting up here that wants these kids not in school.
Absolutely.
There's no one up here that doesn't want these kids playing sports. We want our kids back to normalcy, but data's going to help us drive some of those decisions and having conversations around clusters and where spread happens and how to understand, you know, recommendations on number of positive cases and how many addresses that impacts, or where the clusters come from. I'm, I'm sure the reason they're offering up this free testing from a data perspective is that if they go out there and they test a bunch of students for free over a certain number of weeks, they will have some baseline, benchmark information that tells them what the potential positivity rate is within the schools. They're not doing this for free, for nothing, they're doing it to get data. And the more data we have, the smarter we can become about the options that we can offer out to our families. So I don't disagree with anything that Brenny and, and what Mrs. Goodsell's saying, but I think at the end of the day, we need to get more refined with our partnership with the, with the Board of Health around the data, the clusters, the spread, and how we can articulate back to our parents and our staff for their own confidence and safety, because that's the only way we get to confidence, is with the information.
But also too, data can go both ways, because you have towns like Gardner and, you know, other towns in this area, whose numbers are way higher than ours, and they're back in school. whose numbers are way higher than ours, and they're back in school. You know, and where did the Board of Health come up with the 10%? Was that, did they just said 10%, or is that a guideline? Is that something?
I'll just, so the only two things I would just chime in is I did, actually, I had a conversation with the Gardner superintendent about their data and their learning model the other day. And the reason Gardner is still in their current learning model and tight, in spite of their data, is because of the prison. So because of the large number of cases that are in the prison in Gardner, they know that that's a cluster, they know that that's not part of the general population. So when they're able to segregate that data out, it's not as, it's not as high. So that was one of those things, and I, and I don't know if that's the same impact on Air Shirley or not, but it could, it could be. And when we published that, when I put those tables together the other day, we did not indicate, did not indicate that. And honestly, I, until I had the conversation with the Gardner superintendent, I completely forgot that there was a prison in Gardner, so.
Thank you. Did you have, did you finish your thought?
Yes, I just, I, like I said, I'm just, my heart breaks, because like I said, you're talking to these parents, you're talking to these teachers, and you're talking to these kids. And they, and I know, like I said, Dr. Meyer said, you know, you know, what the CTA, you know, is saying, stay with the 10%. But I've talked to dozens of teachers who, who want to be back. And like I said, you know, kids aren't getting what they need from home. They're, they're not. They're not getting the, the speech therapy. They're not getting all these things. I mean, they're getting it, but on Zoom remote, isn't doing it. And like I said, the younger grades, kindergarten, pre-K, one, you know, these are our learners. These are, these are kids that need to learn how to, to interact, how, you know, and I just, I can't, you know, going to work every day, you know, seeing, you know, how isolated and depressed the seniors get. I, these kids are going through the same darn thing. And it's like, I just think we need to get them back. And I, like I said, I think we're over that curve. We had talked about it previously. We also talked about if we didn't go back on the 19th, we weren't doing sports. I mean, it does just, there's so much that, I, I'm getting emotional now. I just, like I said, just, the people who I've talked to, this is what they've asked me to portray to the rest of the board, and this is what I'm trying to get across to you, and I'm not an eloquent speaker. But like I said, this is just from my heart, what they've said, and I, I think we should at least acknowledge the fact that these parents, teachers, and children want to be back. And like I said, now that we're on the other side of the curve, you know, we had a plan, I want to stick by our plan.
So noted. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to, and just clarify, when I was answering that public comment about sports, and I don't know how you meant this, Matt, but I wasn't using, trying to use sports as any type of negotiating tool to, to bring the kids back. My son goes to Clinton High. He, he played a fall sport, and the fall was a little bit different, where we started off green or yellow, and as the season kind of wound down, it turned into red. And it just kind of, when the, when it came time to shut the sport off, the kind of, the season ended at the same time. So it kind of, it, it affected some of the, I think, the soccer a little bit, with their senior nights, but it kind of ended right in, on time, if you, if you will. I'm in favor of, I know we have kids that co-op at gymnastics and hockey with other towns, and I know we have the, the boys and girls basketball here, and I'm in favor of it all along. What I'm, what I, what I'm, I'm having a hard time with is when, and I'm not, I, I know everybody at this board, you know, I know the people on the Board of Health personally, and they, they do a phenomenal job. And this is probably not what they signed up for a couple of years ago, when they, when they got on there to, to do restaurant inspections, you know? But they've done a great job, and, and they've come up with these numbers, and we're trying to get ahead around it. What my concern is, as I said originally, is, you know, when, if our kids are playing amongst themselves, it's, it's, it's risky enough, you know, and, and, you know, you look at the, the, you know, colleges and the, and the pro, pro leagues are all closing down or postponed because they have these, it's a contagious sickness, disease. So now, it was, they were practicing in-house here, which was fine, and, and I think it was Deb or, or Matt, someone said, you know, on the 19th, when, when that's when the kind of, the season was going to start. But now we're going to start bringing kids in from, from regional schools or just our towns. I know Hudson just had, what, eight students test positive, and we have no way of tracking, you know, who was in that household. So, and, and we don't, and I don't know, and I'm not going to put anybody on the spot here, but some of our players, with any of those sports, are, they also come into school. So are we now not trying, instead of trying to do everything we can to bring the numbers down, are we in effect bringing, bringing more cases into town? And that was my, my concern. I'm not trying to, I'm not anti-sport. I'm not trying to shut it down. We're both, we're all saying, hey, we want to do everything we can to, 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 to lower the number and bring more kids back. But at the same time, we're bringing kids in from out of town over, over, over sports. And maybe, like I said, maybe we can still practice and, and play within ourselves, you know, kind of, you know, five-on-five or something, so they can still play the game without putting residents of Clinton at risk, by, by, and at the same if we travel to, to another town. That was my, my thing. I wasn't trying to negotiate. I wasn't trying to tie the two together. But I just, I have a concern. When you say to a parent, our numbers are too high to bring your kids back for an education, but they're not too high to bring 50 kids from another town in here to play a sport. That's my concern. And that's all I was saying.
Yeah, no.
I'm not making a motion. I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify my position.
I understand. I, well, it's, it's not 50 kids, and, and the A.D.s do talk to one another, that if, if, if.
Well, it is 50 kids. If you have, if, if we have five teams with 10 kids on a team, we have two girls and three boys, right? That's 50 kids. So when we go on the road, we're playing, you know, our 50 kids are going on the road. So when someone comes here, I'm not saying they're coming in as a mass of 50 kids, but they're bringing, so when you add the pod up, you're bringing, well, at the end of this season, you'll have brought 300 kids from out of town into Clinton.
Right, but.
But the pods also.
You brought them in to be in the gym that then gets fogged, and there's only a certain controllable environment. It's not as if these kids are here where the other thousand kids are in the school learning. So I, I guess, it goes back to the cluster data, right? There's, there's very little data that, that says, that is, that is in support of in-sports, you know, seeing numbers rise because of in-sports. So I don't disagree with you, Brenny, but like, that's a controllable environment we can control when the buildings are empty.
Well, there's not a, that's my point. There's not a thousand kids.
Hold on, hold on, everybody, hold on. Can we?
That motion's still on the table, yeah.
Yeah, no, I know. I, can we, can we entertain this motion first? And if, and if you feel strongly about going back and revisiting the other piece, we can do that separately.
What's the motion?
The motion is to continue with the recommendation of the Board of Health.
And then with the potential of revisiting it, I think, you know, just like anything, we could revisit it at the next meeting. But essentially, from now till the.
25th.
Till the 25th, we would follow the Board of Health recommendation. If for some reason we did go to below 10 next week, or we went below 10 the week after, we would start bringing kids back. If we don't by the 25th, we can, we have two weeks now to discuss with the Board of Health. So if we do see some positive trend, maybe there is some sort of leeway or, or, or developments too. I mean, we don't know what the testing data, when that testing program's going to start or anything like that too. So, you know, between now and the 25th, we would have a chance. The only, the thing I, I would just say, the thing I like about that is I think we have worked hard to have a relationship with the Board of Health and to try to work collaboratively with them. And I think this way it kind of honors their recommendation, at least for two weeks till we can see. And like Deb, I agree with you. I mean, I think that this is going to drop off pretty soon. But I think we, we need to kind of start seeing it to drop off, because right now it keeps going up. And I would say, based on the cases that we're getting, I'm, I don't anticipate that it's, you know, we get to list the cases every morning with the addresses, and the last couple of days haven't been terrible. I mean, they haven't been like the 20 or 30, but the, the, you know, the, I'm still, you know, I doubt there's going to be a major drop this week, but I'm hoping that kind of the next week there would be. And that's basically, that's what Mr. Luka said today as well. They don't really anticipate a huge drop this week because of the number of cases that they know have been reported already.
Also, can I just add to?
Please, please.
What Mr. Verakis said about the MIAA, all, all those rules, regulations, all this protocol that they put into place. We put the same stuff into place in the schools too. So like I said, I think if they're playing sports, we're in school. We, we've got the distancing, we've got the sanitizer, we've got the air filters, we've got the classroom filters, we've got the spacing, we've got the, you know, everything that they have in place, we have in place plus. So I mean, I just don't see why. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Bailey, do you want the last word? I feel like I cut you off. Sorry.
Yeah, I don't know what I was thinking. No, well, a couple of things. First of all, there's not a thousand kids in the root class, in the, in the building. That's my point. If we had a thousand kids in the building, then I wouldn't have a problem with playing sports. But, you know, there's no, nobody knows, and I, can they get it on the basketball court? We don't know. I mean, they clearly can, because the colleges are getting it, and pros are getting it. And I agree with Deb in the fact that you can't tell me it's safer to be, what, gymnastics or hockey or basketball. It's, it's safer to do that than it is to be in a classroom when you're socially distanced and you got a mask on and you're not. And if, if the gym is that safe, why aren't we doing phys ed or recess or, or even feeding the kids? And, and I get it. I, I'm not trying to get in an argument here. I, I know this is not, there's not, like I said, there's not a cookie cutter answer. There's not a, you know, we can't get together and say, yep, this is the end, this is going to solve everything. But I just, again, I want to be cautious as to, as to playing games and who, and I mean, I don't mean, I mean, playing matches, you know, in, in, in an event where we're, we're bringing kids into town or people into town that we just, you're, you're just adding more bodies into the building. And by math, I came up with, and again, you correct me, you've had five teams, and there's, you know, six games over the year. That's 300 kids that are coming in here.
I apologize. I didn't know you meant over the length of the season.
No, I don't mean all at once, but you're, so we're saying we can't, you know, and I'm not disputing the Board of Health, and I, I, I agree that, you know, they came up with a number that they, they, you know, through their, through all the meetings they go to, and everyone in the state that they meet with, 10% seemed to be the number, and then 15% on the, on the, on the cases each week, and they're tracking these numbers, and, but we voted, what, three months ago to go fully remote, when we had 33 cases over two weeks. We now have 233 cases, and I don't know who on the board said it, said at that point, we, we voted remote 3 to 2, and it was health trumped everything. And now all of a sudden, we're at 233, and with health trumps everything except for bringing kids, athletes in. And I think the message, and I'm, again, I'm not anti-sport. I think it's great that the kids are doing something, but I think the priority here has to be education. And if, if, if we're saying, you know what, those 50 kids, and it's not just the sport. They're getting to practice and see their friends every day. But yet the other kids that are at home and they, they can't get in here, because, again, because of the, of the virus and then the pandemic. But if you're, if you're an athlete, if you could play any one of those three sports I mentioned, hey, come on, you can see your friends, you can practice. But everyone else, I'm sorry, you know, you're going to have to stay home because we're, we're concerned with the virus. I just think it's a conflicting message, is all I'm saying. Thanks, Joel.
Thank you. All right. So the motion is on the floor. All those in, uh, I'm going to say, I'm going to say there's no further discussion.
Is this motion that's on, is this, when we say following the Board of Health recommendations, this is just a clarification. Is this specific to the learning model, or is this specific to all of the Board of Health recommendations, including the winter sports recommendation? Just because I feel like we've now sort of discussed both those topics, and I don't know if that needs to be, if those need to be two separate motions, or if that.
Mary, what's the motion on the floor? Sorry.
Mr. Verakis, you have to accept the Board of Health's recommendations recommendations until the next meeting, two weeks from now, again, the 25th, and at that time, the number will be reviewed separately.
Okay. So I would, I would say that that is the recommendations in total. And then if we want to make a separate motion to entertain athletics, I guess we could do that after the fact, but.
Well, I guess my question is, if you look at the page where I have the Board of Health recommendations written out, there are three bullets. I think it's the third page in your packet. So those would be the Board of Health recommendations that were, that were approved at the last meeting. So if those are the ones that we're voting to approve, that's, I just want, that's the only thing, I was just trying to make sure that we were clear on, on what was being voted on.
So the recommendation of the Board of Health is that in order for the kids to go to school, it has to be below 10%. But in order for them to play fall sports, it's okay. That's what I'm seeing here?
It's, for winter sports, yeah, and the, the, part of the rationale for that, though, is the fact that the winter sports is an independent, is an independent cohort right now.
But those kids, even if they're at the gym with just their team, and they're exposed, are going to be at school, right?
For what? What do you mean?
No one's at school right now.
But, but if they're exposed, they're going to go to school the next day with their friends, or?
No, because right now, they're all, right now, they're all remote.
No one's at school, right now, yeah. Which I think if it comes to a point, at some point, to Tina's point earlier about like, if kids are going to potentially play sports, they'd be remote, there's probably a conversation down the road.
So I'll, I'll.
Thank you for the clarification.
I guess I'm asking for.
If the numbers go up because, let's say, let's say Hudson comes in and affects our team. I mean, our numbers are going to go up, and then the kids still can't go back to school because our numbers went up again. This is what I'm saying. We're just.
Well, I mean, I think, I look at it as kind of a pretty small micro cause them, but I understand your point.
So it's hanging out down Sterling Street Brewery.
Deb, that, that could happen if a, if a student athlete is working at Shaw's.
They are.
And.
They're, they're working at Shaw's. They're working everywhere, but they can't come to school.
Okay. All right.
Joel, with that motion, I, and, no, no, I just want to, I, I'm looking at the Board of Health recommendations, and I brought this up earlier.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to get with the Board of Health or Steve, just to clarify their policy from the fall. Just so our A.D. knows, in the fall, if you were red, you couldn't go play, you could, whatever. Can you just make, can you just ask them if that's still?
Well, that's not the policy. That's why, that's why they met with the Board of Health Friday.
All right, listen, we can't.
I just need clarification.
We can't all talk at once, please.
But I think that's why they presented to the Board of Health, and Joel and Steve went to the Board of Health meeting, was to get clarification on what they recommended.
I, I do believe, I can double check with them, but I believe it's my understanding that when they approved this, that was part of the reason why they wanted to address this specifically, was because they had to, because of the previous condition with the Reds.
I just want to make sure we don't make a motion and then find out the, this conflict that we're talking to.
They endorsed this. The Board of Health endorsed this Friday. That was our emergency of last Monday when we had the meeting. This was their endorsement.
Okay.
That they agreed to.
Yeah, just checking.
Thank you. Again, thank you.
That's all I'm saying.
There being no further discussion. All those in favor? Three opposed? One. Abstentions? One. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I would echo my fellow board members and say how much I appreciate all of you. I know this is not easy, and and I know that all of your hearts are absolutely in the right places, and, and to a degree, all of you are right. So, all right, we have a direction. Thank you.
And we'll continue our conversations with the Board of Health, and if we needed to go back, like I said, if we can, if we see, you know, in two weeks, we can revisit it, if we start seeing positive movement in the numbers, if they want to, you know, if they want to recommend, or if we want to decide at that point to maybe bring back kindergarten or something like that, we could look at that.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So now superintendent's report?
Yes, please.
All right, so the first thing I want to do is introduce a new staff member. We did mention that Chris DeHan was appointed the Director of Technology. He officially started, I think it was December 20th. He's here tonight, so Chris, just want, do you want to introduce yourself? Maybe say a few words?
I don't take up too much of your time.
No, please.
I have a lot of other things to add more, but just want to say hello. I just put a masked face to the name. Grown to be here. I can't wait to, you know, it's been four weeks. I can hardly tell what a great environment and community this is. I can obviously tell by the time spirit that they, that's been going on, you know, regardless of pandemic, and how things are, and how things are going. Just quickly, you know, I'm a big believer in technology. Obviously, it's been a huge crucial part of education and learning, especially over the last 10 months. But, you know, I'm a big believer in, that technology doesn't dictate the education. The education and the learning dictates technology, technology, and how it's used, and how it's bridged. Most of the core people are obviously our staff members and our students. And I'm making sure that technology doesn't get in the way, but helps aid that learning, helps that education. Grown to be here, excited for the challenge. Everyone's been great. Everyone I've met, the building's been terrific, the administration, the staff, a few students I've interacted with. Looking forward to, especially here in your place.
Thank you very much. You, you have an enormous job in front of you, and we're, we're grateful you're here. We.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
I think Chris has done a nice job stepping in, and really, you know, it was great, it was kind of an awkward start date. He started right over the, when the vacation started, but it gave him some time to really kind of inventory the schools and kind of get, get a chance to, to, to sort of assess the status of our technology and our infrastructure. And then I remember talking to him on, like, the Monday after we came back, and, and he was like, yeah, today's my first real day. As he started dealing with the, the troubleshooting and the things that came up, but it was, but it's good. We're happy to have Chris on board. The next update was just Facilities Director. Not a huge update on that, but I know the, the committee has met and done some first round interviews. We're just kind of wrapping up the first round, I think, is, is a fair way to, to put us. And we're hoping to kind of move on that quickly. I know Mr. Bailey and Mr. Verakis are on that committee. I don't know if you guys, if there's anything that you want to add, or if that's.
No, just, it's been, it's been also great to, to work with the committee and have Alexis on board, you know, with, with this being one of the first things that she's tackling. So I think it's been, it's been organized well, and we're excited about the opportunity of finding the right person.
Great. Good luck. Keep us informed.
So, just a couple of quick updates. So, FY '21, there is a handout in here. It's another memo from the DESE on assessment and accountability. And it is just talking about basically how they're handling MCAS this year. They are planning on doing, so they are going to make the, modify the competency determination to the class of 2021. That's something similar to last year. So, if you remember, a few weeks ago, we were talking about needing to get seniors in the building who had not passed to take the retest. We do not need to do that right now, as long as those seniors are enrolled in a similar class, and they pass it, they can, they can meet the competency determination that way. They plan on shortening the testing for grades three to eight. And really, I'd say that the emphasis and the way the Commissioner described it in our call last week was that, you know, they, they want to go through with the testing because they think it's very important for us to get a sense on where our students are, and how has this sort of impacted them over the last year. But I think that the, the focus is not necessarily going to be on accountability as much in terms of, you know, ranking schools, but more on how do we support student learning.
Isn't it almost as much about keeping the validity and reliability of the test in place as well, the tests themselves, since you norm it each year against a group of students?
Correct. And I think that's part of what they, they're shortening the sample size, but they're trying to keep it in a, to a substantial enough model to, to keep the integrity of the test.
Right. So, Mr. Bailey might take a math test, and Mrs. Zapantis might take an ELA test, and I might take a science test, but we might not take the same test at the same time.
Because it'll be more of a sampling.
Right.
Yeah. I think, I mean, they haven't rolled out the exact, how it's going to look, but I think that's part of what they talked about. Or it could potentially be, yeah, something to that effect, exactly. So, I mentioned the accountability relief, and the access testing window has been extended, and the MCAS biology test doesn't really affect us, but some schools on, say, block schedules would give that science exam in February. They're saying that they can push that off till, till June. The next thing I had here is just a mid-year goals update. This is a pretty brief mid-year goals update. I know a lot of times I give you a whole bunch of evidence and stuff, but I, I just didn't have time to put a whole bunch of evidence together, so I tried to give you the brief bulleted list. You know, if you look, our first goal is supporting physical wellness, and I think, you know, this is kind of updating a lot of those things that we talk about every day, every meeting. Supporting mental wellness, we do have, the Clinton Elementary School has a social emotional learning team that is still participating in the DESE's social emotional learning MTSS, or the Tiered System of Support Academy. They're looking at implementing some things like mood meters and emojis for students to help identify how they're feeling. Even our new ELA program has SEL frameworks embedded into the curriculum. CMS and CHS have been using an advisory check-in with students to try to keep a monitor, keep a check-in on how students are doing. Goal three is really assessing the rest of all learners. We've been doing the I-Ready assessment from K to eight, so they were given, everyone was given a diagnostic assessment at the beginning of the year. The second diagnostic is scheduled to be given at the halfway point of the year, which we're approaching right about the beginning of February. We will have, you know, students will be able to take it remotely if they have to. It is a, is a computer-generated assessment. The high school special education needs has been trained in the Lincoln Assessment. They have not been able to implement that yet, but that's a free assessment from the state that they're hoping to use. And just, you know, the sheer amount of meetings that they've had, 430 IEP meetings regarding COVID regression, and looking at those, those were all held, those, those had to be held by December 15th. And that we have actually been accepted as an early adopter for the IEP Improvement Project, which means we'll be doing some professional development and looking at how, how we can improve IEPs. Meeting needs of all learners through Universal Design for Learning. We have been going, still have our ongoing technical assistance with Rodriguez Educational Consulting. I believe our next day is tomorrow. That'll be primarily with the administration, with the principals, to try to sort of make sure we're on, on checking in for the next steps. At this point, almost all staff have participated in the UDL overview, the Universal Design for Learning overview training, and developed a problem of practice. The next phase will really focus on incorporating into planning. We're also planning on starting a UDL, the book is called UDL Now, book study with our building leadership teams. That's another, that, that the RICO will facilitate. Using technology to support the transition of learning is necessary. Technology PD was the focus of the full-day PD on October 23rd, focused on learning things like Google Meet, additional resources like Jamboard, Paradac. And a lot of our SLPs have completed bilingual certification for telehealth. And then our last goal is promoting social justice and racial equality by continuing to address unconscious bias, bias in the curriculum, working to support families for whom English is not their primary language. So, we did hire a family outreach coordinator, funded through the Title III grant. She started on 11/30/2020 to help support her families fluent in Spanish, Portuguese. You met her. She's been doing a great job. You know, it's so much better now. If I get someone to reply to my, you know, I'll send out my emails, I'll get a reply in, in Spanish or Portuguese instead of me having to do my best Google translating. I'm able to, to afford it, and she's able to reach out. And I think it's, it's really helping those families a lot better.
That's great.
We, you know, we did have the parent orientation meetings at the end of the, at the beginning of the year. We had bilingual translators supported 114 different families during those meetings.
That's great.
We were awarded a Teacher Diversification Pilot Program grant, so we are working, participating in the DESE's Diversity Network. We have a session meeting tomorrow. First session was on November 19th, next is on January 12th. Those are really primarily focused on recruiting and retaining teachers of color. We've been contracting with the DESE PD partner, TNTP, and right now, we're designing and recruiting a district-wide equity team. So, we did an initial survey. We're trying to round out that team. And so, 10 members have expressed interest so far. We're trying to get a few more members to just try to round out some of our, our different stakeholder areas. TNTP will convene support and try to train that equity team. The primary goals will be to develop an equity statement and set some goals as a district through that equity team, and also to have the equity team sort of start to, to share those goals in that plan through PD on March 29th. So, I know that's a very quick overview of six goals, but I just want you to, you know, I think it's important just to realize that, I know we spend a lot of time doing contact tracing and talking about reopening. There are still a lot of things going on, you know, behind the scenes. And it's, it's been a challenge with, with how fluid things have been, but I think we're, we're still making headway in those areas. The next one was an update from the Food Service Department. The Food Service, you know, I won't read all of this to you. You know, they are, we are doing grab and go. Basically, the financial position is, is much improved with the not having to collect the lunch meal, the, the lunch money, basically able to, to bill directly for those meals. The, we are, we are currently only operating half-staff because we're, we're only working out of the CES cafeteria right now, and then we're delivering meals. They have received significant grants, you know, 18, 18.5 from Project Bread, 2,500 from Fallon, 11, 656 from the CV, CVRF. And one of the things that they, one of the things we have purchased, which is one of the reasons why I want to update this to you, one of the things we were able to purchase through those grant funds was a, a new van. So, they have a, it's a transit van. It's not for pupil transportation, but it's for delivering meals. And the idea is, part of what we signed up for last year was to be a summer food distribution site. So, kind of like last year, how, if you remember, when we were shut down, we had the, the multiple pickup sites where we would drive around town. The goal is to try to make sure that we're able to offer those this summer. Last year, we were able to use our vans. Right now, the Food Service isn't able to use our current vans because our current vans are being used to transport students. So, so they were able to, to purchase that. The, and Mr. Van Ass and Ms. Armstrong have been asked by Project Bread to be part of a statewide panel presenting to schools about becoming a new summer food service program. That's coming up, I believe, next month. And just a couple other updates. You know, over 130,000 meals have been served since, since we, since we closed in March. So, so overall, I think that, you know, Food Service has been, they've been very flexible, and they've been able to, to make this work, especially with the grab and go meals, and, and, you know, anything we've, any changes we've needed to make, I'm, you know, able to call Mr. Van Ass, and they've been pretty flexible with it. So, it's good. Yep.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bren. I didn't see, go right ahead.
I was just going to make a quick statement. I just, to the Food Services, this, you know, some good has come out of this pandemic, and one is, is the job that the Food Services, Mr. Van Ass and his staff have done. And I know Deb at the Senior Center and Tina with their work had done at Wheat, they see the, the need for food in the community. And over these several months, I've, I've seen staff from the middle school, the Guidance Department, psychologists, out, you know, in their own cars, picking up food down at the elementary school, and then, you know, dropping it to those, those needy families where the parents are at work and these kids are home alone. So, the job that your, that your staff has done, Steve, in this area, I mean, all in all, but in this area, in this community, has just been, been tremendous. So, please, you know, I know Dave Van Ass is not watching this, but please pass on, not a chance. The game's on. Dave's not watching this. Please pass on to Dave and his staff, and, and all your, you know, anyone in your administration that's going out, you know, in their cars, passing out, giving these food and feeding the community, would just, just thanks, for me anyway.
Here, here. Thanks for bringing it up.
It is wonderful. I, I guess that's where my question stems from is, so as far as the free meals go, how are we recovered through the rest of this year, or has there been...
I believe it's through the rest of this year, and then we should be able to offer the free summer meals through the summer regardless, because we're a summer, a summer feeding program. So, what we're working on right now is really still trying to clean up our data, try to identify all of our students to see, hopefully, even after maybe some of the pandemic waivers go away, if we would be able to revisit the community eligibility provision to try to continue with the free meals. So, so we are working on that as well.
Thank you.
All right. Two quick financial things. The first one, I think would require sort of a vote, the FY '21 budget revision. And it's really three line items. So, you have a copy of the FY '21 budget. The version de-approved budget is, you know, the fourth column is what was approved at town meeting. And then if you look at the, I guess it's the seventh column, it says revised January 2021. If you go to page one, two, three, I guess they have numbers, page three, what you'll see in the 2305 Classroom Teachers line, you would see that there's an increase to CES classroom teachers by $265,156, CMS classroom teachers by $221,879, and CHS classroom teachers by $215,986, for a total increase of $703,003. What that represents is the additional, remember the, the special town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
They voted to amend our budget, to increase the budget. This will, this basically is the amount of money from school choice that was, that we no longer need to use from school choice because we can use through the appropriation. So, this is just sort of the, I don't know, the cleanup, final accounting end of the result of the town meeting vote. So, if you guys are comfortable with that, essentially what we did is we looked at, you know, their staff, basically what was in the school choice line was staff. So, we moved those staff to the appropriate school. So, if you guys are comfortable with that revision, if you want to make a motion to accept it.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept a revised FY '21 budget?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second. I only do the adjournment one, but don't...
You can do that, too. Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion? There being none. All those in favor?
All right.
Unanimous. Thank you.
All right. And the only other thing I wanted is a financial update, is we are working on the mid-year update, trying to encumber everything. Now that we have these budget revisions, we'll incorporate those budget revisions, and we should be able to give you a mid-year update on where we are in the general fund on our January 25th meeting with our year, our midway point, actual expenditures and our encumbrances for the rest of the year.
Thank you.
For FY '22, you know, two things on here. The first one, in your packet, there's a preliminary calendar. It's just a draft. There's no PD or anything on it at all. It is a basic calendar. Basically, we just mapped out sort of where are the holidays, where would the first, where would day 180, where would the first date typically be, and where would day 181 or 180 and 185 be? So, we don't need to take any action on this yet. It's just, on my to-do list, I like to start getting the calendar going in January. So, here's the draft. I want to make sure we're staying on a, but we'll have to start entertaining and filling in professional development and those type of things over the coming, coming meetings. But you feel free to review this, and if you have any specific questions on any, any of the holidays or breaks or starting days, we can revisit those in the future. And then just a reminder that our preliminary budget for FY '22, our plan is to get you a preliminary budget on February 8th, and meeting with all the building principals and the directors on, individually on Wednesday, to review all their, their requests as we go ahead and try to build out the FY '22 budget, so that we can at least get, as I said, it'll be a preliminary budget. We, like normal, we build a preliminary budget based on what we think it would take to successfully run the district. And then as we start getting financial information, we'll try to merge those, the, what we think we need with what we think is appropriate funding or acceptable, you know, the expected funding, and try to come to some consensus there. So, I think that's all I have.
Jeez. Is that it?
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Meyer relative to anything presented under his report that hasn't already been asked or brought up?
I just have one quick question. I know that, I, I read somewhere that the Board of Health is, is having a clinic for first responders for the COVID vaccinations, but it reminded me about this whole flu shot mandate for our students. I was just wondering where we were with that.
I'll have to look into exactly where we are with that with the numbers, but they did push the deadline out. So, originally, it was July, December 31st or whatever, and they did push it out to, it's either February 1st or the end of February. I'll have to, so I'll have to check with our nurses, but I can get more information on that and just double-check where we are on that. I know we've sent a few communications out, and people have been getting us stuff in, but we'll, I can follow up on that.
Thank you. So, I know that we just met last Monday, and, and at that time, we didn't have any updates from committees, so I don't believe that we have any right now. And I know that negotiations, your next meeting is the 14th.
Joel, I just have one.
Sir.
The, I'm not sure if it falls in, if I'm, the subcommittee I'm on with the, the town property. So, I don't know if that falls under facilities or if it's separate. Anyway, we met last Wednesday. It's the first one we had. I did tell Steve that, and I didn't do it, so I, but I will send an email to the chairman and to Steve to share with the board.
Okay.
There's two properties that they're...
This is the town surplus committee?
Yes. So, there's two properties that they're concerned with, or asking about with the school committee. And I did mention this to some of you guys, but anyway, I'll kind of, I just want to send it to Selectman D. Valt first to make sure that what I interpreted, when I get out of the meeting, we agreed.
Yeah.
And then I would send it to you guys and kind of give you a, kind of a, we're meeting again next Wednesday. So, I'll send it, I'll try to get to you guys this week so you can read it over, and then if you got something, then I can bring it back to the meeting on Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything under old business?
Nope.
Anything under new business? We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Second. It's my job, Jan.
All those in favor, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you very much.
What's the, what do you think the score is? Do you want to know?
Well, I'd like to see Ohio State, because I hate Ohio State, so I'm going to go Ohio State, Tennessee. Well, it just started, though, didn't it? It really started.
Oh, yeah, that's probably just, it's not really eight o'clock. Zero, zero.